Okay, after our last retreat one year ago, we had several plans, big lofty plans, of things we were going to accomplish in this year. And then right afterwards, we had some significant executive staff turnover. So I wanted to start with this slide to show you the goals that we had set for ourselves and how we are still on track for everything, if not exceeding the goals that we set ourselves, set for ourselves last year. The specific ones I wanted to talk about so that you guys had updated information about it would be, let's see where else is it? One of them is the Neighbors Leading Neighbors GoFundMe Service Project website. To remind you guys, this was the idea where Yolanda's been finding, had been finding fences. So let's say there was an elderly lady who had a fence that was broken and it was basically, she was actively going and finding someone in the community that would volunteer or finding the resources in the community to volunteers fix that fence. Josh Roberts' idea was, why don't we put this all online, automate it, and then people can adopt these projects. Once we got into that, we started realizing the risk involved in the city because you may have an elderly lady and a volunteer we haven't vetted and then adopting and going to her house in the cities in the middle of all that. The better solution we found over this year is that we reached out to nonprofits as well as faith-based institutions that are actually part of our TLC group that we will talk about later on, who have said, "We'll just take care of all of them. If you just, we get the middleman, get the city out, if you just tell them to come to us, we'll fix it for them." And so we have found the resources for these people, maintain the same level of service, but taken the city out of the middle of it, which allows us to focus on more of our projects that we have. We are still doing a website. We're connecting that with the Together Louisville Coalition and we'll go through that later on, but it's going to be a bigger picture idea for volunteering in our community. So we're reaching out to the nonprofit saying, "What services do you need as a nonprofit? What services did the city need?" And then creating a clearinghouse where people can adopt projects, the same, it's just not going to be the small fences type thing. We'll go over the Together Louisville Coalition later in this presentation. The Make a Difference Day, we had scheduled that for the beginning of 2019. We are, it's going to be basically, I think we had told council last year, was we're going to dip our toes into the water for the first time. And so the first year, we are going to be acting as support for a lot of the other nonprofits that are in the community and then doing outreach to our citizens and saying, "Louisville, the city of Louisville is a partner on here, let's get engaged on this day," and then we will grow that in future years. So that's still on track. We also have the Best Neighborhood Program. If you remember, last year, we had pitched this to council and council had said, "We want to hold off on this." The idea was a Plano project and council had said, "You know, Plano, not what fits Plano doesn't necessarily fit Louisville." And I think with council member Ferguson's pitch, this year is really kind of the Louisville version of those neighborhood programs. So we're really going to be focusing our efforts neighborhood program-wise on those types of things, which actually were things staff were also working on until council member Ferguson suggested his pitch idea. We said, "Hey, we've got stuff that we're already working on, so this is great." Sustainability, if you remember, sustainability had been reorganized into underneath Josh Roberts. It has been not, it's been reorganized again to be directly under Assistant City Manager. The reason for that is because sustainability touches so many different departments, we thought it was really best to have it still in the city manager's office so that there's just a higher profile. So if you remember last year, code enforcement, we were reimagining code enforcement and we had reorganized code enforcement underneath Neighborhood Services. We wanted our code officers not just to be a hammer in the community, to be liaisons out of the community, to be an extension of Neighbors Leading Neighbors and to work on neighborhood programs. With our change in leadership, we now have Wayne Snell, who's our Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, who's somewhere out there, I saw him earlier. There he is. This is just a portion of the people that report to Wayne. He's got a whole other side that deals with the building inspection side, health inspection, and animal services, but this is our Neighborhood Services team. The other big difference here with the organizations, we have Prit Patel. So Prit Patel was an Economic Development Coordinator, she is now a Neighborhood Services Coordinator, which really fits for Prit, if you know her engagement in her nonprofit and trying to reach into the community, getting better engagement, get people involved in giving back to their neighborhood. This was a perfect fit. When she came on, we wanted to give her a little bit of time to reimagine what Neighbors Leading Neighbors was, what our neighborhood programs were. And we've been giving her that time and we will in the next few months be bringing back a program for you guys to look at. Really, it's going to be less of the minutia of dealing with one person's problems and getting resources. Like I told you, we found those resources for them with our partners in TLC. But it's going to be more of talking about getting neighborhoods engaged and become independently engaged by use of programs such as the NET program, which is coming up, which was the neighborhood program that we had provided to meals and that option. The other is our CERT program. We think those types of programs are really a way to light a flame over our community. So that's where we're going. Also with code enforcement, not only have we asked them to be liaisons, we've also asked them to start enforcing zoning and development regulations. The importance of that, if you remember, we used to have building inspections do that. Building inspection is a 24-hour time clock. You get a call to go do inspection on a building, "Well, I've got to go head out there 24 hours." They are not on a normal beat. They have basically calls for service and they go out and they make those calls. So everything with regard to enforcement and zoning, if it fell under their offices, became reactionary, not proactive. Code enforcement operates differently because they have beats, they are proactive. They go on the community, they see there's a problem, they enforce. With zoning, if you have a non-conforming use, you see some operation of a non-conforming use, the city has to be able to document it if you want to later on say you've lost your non-conforming use. We had several instances where we were like, "We think they've lost their non-conforming use, we have no evidence of it because we didn't have those regular boots on the ground." Well, code enforcement's been doing that and we started enforcement against several non-conforming uses. One of them, a couple of them are in Old Town and some of them are looking to move out of Old Town now, so that's very exciting news. The other thing about code enforcement, Jason, help me. Okay. I was going to show you some really cool show and tell, but we're having connectivity issues over here, so I'll just talk to it, but I'll send it to you guys later because it's really exciting. So asking code enforcement to do all this stuff, obviously if we put 10 times more work on a team, we either have to add personnel or we have to become 10 times more efficient. We became 10 times more efficient because of the help of our IT department. They have redone, as Jason told you before, our code enforcement, we got off New World from a code enforcement standpoint. It is literally two clicks and all of the forms are populated for them and, I mean, they're 50% more efficient in the field. That means they can do 50% more than what they were doing before. So yay, more efficiency. The other thing that IT did for us was they created, and we were going to pull this up for you, was online ASBILs. So those ASBILs are engineering site plans. Now, not all of them are on there, but what they found, I think I just told you guys, my goal for this was if a code officer is in the field and he sees a piece of property next to him, he should be able to pull up a map and sight that a commercial property and go, "Okay, the landscaping should look like this, this is what the building should look like." They shouldn't have to go back to City Hall, have someone else pull up a plan for them, and then go back out and do that. So, oh, we have got it, okay.
I can only find you with the list, not the actual site plan.
Okay.
I can say that because you're inside our network.
Okay. So they created, and you can get this on our GIS map online, so what this is, is you'll be able to click on these different squares and find the engineering site plans that we currently have. We are actually re-coding, basically creating new metadata in our existing ones that aren't on there to be able to get them to be pulled onto this GIS map. That'll take a couple of years to work on. So with that, now our code officers can pull up engineering site plans in the field. The other really exciting thing that I know all the council members are going to be excited about is IT has now created a code enforcement lookup for you on a GIS map. It is only internal facing, so council members will have access to it, staff will have access to it. We will, we want to ultimately make it outward facing, but what it is, if you are a council member, if you're going down the street, you know you can make a code complaint right now, but you have no idea what the code history is on that property. Now, you can look on the map, you can look at that parcel, put that address in and see there are five pending cases and you can look at the history of it as well. Now, this has only gone online since October when we moved over onto our new software because we're able to pull very easily from our new code enforcement software program, but it is an incredible tool. And it's really great for management as well because Jack can immediately go look at a map and go, "I know exactly what's happening on this piece of property, I don't have to call a code officer," or, "This code officer has been writing tickets for all these things for the community to get onto this code officer." Whatever it is, from a management standpoint, it's a great tool. Thanks, Claire. The next update is dealing with the Together Louisville Coalition. There's a lot of things I want to touch on this, so I'll make sure and look at it. So if you guys remember, the Together Louisville Coalition started with Josh Roberts and his idea was that if you can get all of the players in a room, meaning the city, meaning the school district, meaning nonprofits, faith-based institutions, and you put one problem in the middle of that room, "How do we solve this person who's homeless?", someone in that room will have solutions and working together, we can solve this problem. So the idea started with that. The other thing with that is with creating a coalition made up of faith-based institutions and nonprofits and full city government is resiliency. So we talked about the benefits of having an emergency manager being in charge of Neighborhood Services. And the whole thing was, we don't want to just react to an emergency, we want to be a resilient city. So when an emergency happens, we have people that immediately know how they fit into the solution of fixing the community from that emergency. So that was one of the points of doing this. And the other problem was, we wanted to avoid duplication of services in our community. What nonprofits were providing, another one, if they're not talking together, then there may be duplications. So we began this pilot program of Together Louisville Coalition and I wanted to introduce you to Ashley Carrion. Come on up, Ashley. Ashley is our Community Rant Specialist and we've been working her like crazy. So Ashley has a background in emergency management and we hired her, so she is underneath Jamie and does CDVG, the social service side. So you may not realize, maybe some of you do because you've been on CDVG boards, but the amount of auditing that we have to do for our social service agency. So yeah, it's great that we have contracts, we give you money, but then she has to go out and she has to make sure their operations are complying with all federal requirements. This is a full-time job. On top of that, she's dealt with the Timber Creek Buyout Program, that's been all her. As soon as Josh left, that's her. And then on top of that, we said, "We also want you to build this entire program and meet with all these nonprofits and get them on board." And she's been fantastic, she's a superstar. So I wanted to introduce Ashley and have her walk through the implementation and strategy plan we've done for Neighborhood Services, I mean, sorry, for Together Louisville Coalition. So deal with a vision statement, a mission statement, and then we'll talk about our meetings. Here, I'll pass it.
Good morning, council. I hope it's okay, I brought a additional speaker this morning. So Claire did a great job on talking about what the vision statement for TLC is, but a little bit more into the mission is really creating those connections, seeking efforts, and expanding the reach of our local community. So our nonprofits are reaching specific clients, but let's broaden that reach. And so what I've been doing so far is meeting with nonprofits and faith-based organizations, which have been really positive. Everyone has been really excited about the concept of TLC and they really want to be involved. I've had a couple that had some hesitations, these were the bigger nonprofits in our area. Like Claire said, I tell them, "We don't want to duplicate services that are happening." Well, they ask, "Well, is this not a duplication of services?" So that's a point that we definitely are looking at. And then also, when I say coalition, they go, "Another meeting? I don't want to go to another meeting." So how do we make sure that these, this coalition is beneficial to them and that we are not duplicating services that they are providing? And then we've also been working on a website, like Claire said, it's pretty exciting, I can't wait to show it to you guys when it's ready. And then the implementation and strategy management has passed out. So this is the group of people that we have met with so far and they are all very excited about it.
Can you remind us one quick? So as Ashley said, it was really interesting to me because I came in here thinking, "Oh, these are a bunch of nonprofits and they're like, we're all going to hold hands and sing kumbaya, this is, how are they not going to love this?" And one of the first statements, first people we met said, "You know, we're all competing with one another, right? We all have, it's all one pie and we all have our own slices of pie." And I don't really, I don't, I hope the city doesn't expect that we're going to share resources with anyone else. You know, I'm willing to share us up to a certain amount, but you realize that they're my direct competition for money. And so we were like, "Didn't realize this, this is a concern." But I'll tell you that it is an underli, maybe not all of them are that vocal about it, but all of them, this isn't underlying a concern because it's about finance, it's about, you know, that type of thing. They did say to us though, "But if you can grow the pie, we're all on board, but you need to be able to show us how you're growing the pie." They are, I will say that they are, all these folks have said, "We're signing on, we're members of TLC," but they are, they're stepping, you can tell, they're wanting to see what we're going to make of it. So we're really seeing this as a pilot program. My biggest concern about TLC is it's only as good as our partners, right? So, you know, we're not, Ashley and I, council, all of us as a team, we can only get so far with TLC if our partners don't meet us halfway. So, you know, we talked about a website and creating, you know, projects, well, those projects are populated by these partners and if they don't send us their information, we don't have projects on our website. It makes me nervous to rely upon third parties that I don't have control, I'm a control freak clearly, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that risk. So we are seeing that this is a pilot program. The other thing, what Ashley said is, "We don't want to come to another meeting." Our original thought was, "Let's have socialists for these folks and we'll, you know, we can all have, you know, a glass of wine and talk about our..." I'm such an angling, right? Like they look at me and they go, "We are short-staffed, we don't have time to meet. It has to be meaningful. If we're going to have meetings, we have to know that they're the right people in the room. We're not talking, sitting around in a room going, 'Hi, I'm Claire from Denton County Friends and Family, this is what I do.' And hi, I'm from Kyle's Place and this is what I do.'" It has to be real problem solving. And so that, the idea we have is targeting topics for discussion when we have these. So not everyone has to come to these meetings at TLC, but we would have topics of discussion. Homelessness might be one, or budget suites might be one. And then everyone who touches that in the community can come around the table and talk about, "What resources have I been looking for?" Interesting thing, duplication of services, that's the other point. They say, "Duplication of services isn't so bad in the community, why is that bad?" Let the market decide that. If I'm providing pediatric care to our kids in our community and there's another group that's providing pediatric care and we're both sustaining ourselves, then why is the city going to try to stop that duplication? We're clearly doing fine on our own and the community needs both of us. But the duplication of services, they did say, was a problem is this, which I thought this is an interesting analogy. One of them says, "It's raining really hard this week, so we go out to budget suites and we provide all the residents with umbrellas." And then another nonprofit in the room goes, "I, we did that two days ago. We gave umbrellas to every single member of budget suites." I mean, if they had been talking together, that type of thing is what we're talking about, duplication of services, not, you know, the big mission of these nonprofits. Okay. Do you want to go through anything more with the implementation? So with next steps on Together Louisville Coalition, we're going to continue growing the program. I did want to mention again, this is a pilot program, it's only as good as our partners, but the other thing is Ashley has a full-time job and we've saddled her with this additional work, which is probably two times her job. So if we are going to be successful, it really will probably take additional staff in future years. I think Ashley can handle this with the help. You know, we are going to be calling upon Kent to help us, we're calling upon Prit to help us and we are seeing ourselves all as one team. And I will talk to you guys also about how council members can also help in this regard in this next component. But we just wanted to let you know of that ongoing. If this is something we really want to double down on, it's going to probably take more staff time. So I don't, I wanted to talk about this. This is something that came out of TLC and our meetings with our TLC members, it's really exciting. It's going to happen and I think council can be really excited about it. So Ashley, you want to talk about that?
So something out of my meetings that I've had with these nonprofits and faith-based and even CDVG public hearings is, we have clients or residents here in Louisville that need, have multiple needs that maybe one agency cannot provide all those needs, their services. So you have a client that has five needs, but an agency can only provide three of those needs. Well, now they have to get on a bus or find some way to transport to another agency. So why not have all the agencies or nonprofits in one place? And so instead of saying, "You have to drive up to Denton now to get the rest of your needs," just go two tables down. So having a pop-up one-stop shop, that's kind of our name right now, but it's kind of a vendor fair, having all the agencies in one room and having Louisville residents come in and say, "These are my needs," and they can just go and talk to the agencies. And it's not the agency there saying, "Okay, well, here's my card, come to our office." It's, "I'm doing case management here with you right now." And then going two tables down and having another agency doing case management right now with those people. So I'm really excited about that.
The really cool thing with TLC and it talks about how this is a benefit to us already is that one of our partners, Valley Creek, has the Next Step Center and when they were talking to Ashley, she just happened to mention, you know, "We've been hearing about the need for having a physical location where everyone's there." They have a huge location and they said, "We'll offer a free charge to have it at the Next Step Center." And on top of that, with regard to transportation, they'd offered to pay for DCTA bus passes for our citizens who need services at the Next Step Center for that one day that we have this one-stop pop-up. So because of, regardless of, you know, a website and whether or not that's maintainable in the future because people are talking to us or not, just talking to these people, these nonprofits and faith-based institutions and having them talk together is already, you're seeing a benefit to the community. So the next is an expansion to businesses. So this is the next question. So this actually came before me by TJ. And so his thought, and you can give more background, council member Gilmore, about where you had first heard this idea, was the idea of TLC not just being faith-based institutions and nonprofits, but why not have businesses be part of it? And at first I thought, "I can barely do this," right? Like this is, you know, talking to the nonprofits. But when we talk to the nonprofits, what I realized is when we talk about expanding that pie, the businesses are the expansion of the pie. Getting people that are willing to come on and be, provide, you know, we have the needs, but the people who supply the answers to the needs are the business community, not just our citizens. So the more I've, the more I got into this and we got into this, the more we thought this is really what's going to, you know, if you want the nonprofits to really sign on, then businesses may be the answer. So I wanted to hand it over to TJ to kind of talk about what you've seen.
Well, I think kind of my aha moment was when I was talking with staff and we'll get the occasional request come in, and they're not, they're not occasional, I guess they're a little more frequent. A group, an organization, a church, whatever it is, a business, will call up and say, "Hey, I've got a group of people, we want to do a team-building exercise, we want to go help rehab a home, we want to clean up a creek bed, we want to..." whatever, "Provide for a family for Christmas." And the response typically was, "Well, great, well, we'll need to get you vetted and we'll need to go find a project and give me about four, six, eight weeks." And the response at that point was, "Well, no, I got on schedule for this Saturday, let's... What do you got?" And so my thought is, is that, yeah, it's the expansion of the pie, but it's also a way to get businesses more engaged with Louisville as a city and not, you know, when their lease is up, start going, "Okay, I got to shop around for another, you know, business deal. This town provides my newer, younger workforce who's looking for community engagement and they're looking for a more holistic environment to live, work, and play in. It's providing me those resources." It's letting my HR team find new leaders because they're stepping up and taking on these projects that aren't controversial inside the four walls of the business, right? If I say to an up-and-comer, "Hey, I want you to do this project," well, it creates tension with the manager above them, right? "Oh, you're not happy with me." As opposed to, "Well, here's an outside project and they did well and come this way." So what I'm envisioning is, you know, some of this may come out of our Neighbors Leading Neighbors, some of it may come out of our social service groups saying, "Hey, we've got a, we've got a home here that needs issues." Some of it may come out of OSAVA, but I see where we can really get the business community much more engaged with, you know, "Hey, we need funds for this" or "We need people for that." And if we can get this into a web portal where, you know, the need gets thrown up there or the resource gets thrown up there and then let these organizations have that conversation between themselves and kind of take the city out of it and then it's not a function of, "Well, when I have a staff member available in eight weeks." It's a function of, "You guys and you guys talk, the city's cool with it, this, let's go."
I think our Together Louisville Coalition website that we will show you guys probably in the next few months as well, it's putting the last finishing touches on it. I think it would do that with regard to just putting up projects that businesses can sign up for. So the other...
Well, not only that, but it gives the businesses some awareness of those not-for-profits that are available in the area, who they can work with, right? So if that business wants to work with a church, they can work with a church, but if they want to work for, with United Way or if they want to, you know, too often, most of these not-for-profits, with the exception of a few, they're all in Denton. And we start creating this issue of, "We're shipping people to Denton." You know, well, technically we are because that's where the help is, but, you know, we're a big city. We have a lot of needs and a lot of issues and giving the perception that we're just shipping everything to Denton, that's not, that's not building good relationships with our, with our communities north of the bridge and we need to be able to help those organizations because it's tough. They don't, you know, they have limited resources, limited personnel, all those pressures that you said, so it's tough for them to come south of the bridge.
So again, you heard some positive progress on ideas that we developed and discussed last year and also some steps forward to some of the challenge, to address some of the challenges in terms of how to make this coalition work effectively for everybody. The idea of pursuing or investigating, expanding the pie by increasing business involvement in the project, I think what Claire and Ashley have shared is a type of approach that they believe would be an appropriate one for this next year. Looking for direction from you all for following for that.
I'll ask questions, Brett or Brandon?
Oh, I was going to say, I like the idea of a website that can direct people to projects and things and I think that the nonprofits want to be a part of that because one, like you said, duplication of services and sometimes why would you want to compete on the same weekend if you can work, if you can schedule your things and everybody knows where everything is and that would expand a lot because businesses will be able to see what's happening there and hopefully, I agree with TJ, we can make it a little bit more Louisville central, but, you know, we have some local nonprofits and faith-based organizations out there. So, and, you know, when I lived here, I didn't know where any of the service projects were until I got logged in, I found out about different things. So I think it's a great site that may help facilitate...
That website to help the organizations coordinate and help the people who need some kind of assistance.
And I agree with you.
If businesses are looking for opportunities, how all be able to work with them.
Yeah, that was it for me and how I expand my donor base and businesses and those individuals that work for businesses will expand their donor base for each organization.
And I don't, I don't know if this makes sense or if it's even kind of a little bit what you're saying too, is can an additional part of this website be, if you're looking to volunteer, here's all these organizations that need this help, not just, "I need help, we're going to go to," but, you know, "I want to donate my time, there's a one-stop-shop to go and we need, this organization needs these kind of donations, this organization needs, you know, people that'll work these hours." I mean, I don't know, it may not be important, it may not...
Absolutely. I mean, this is going to be a site that we'll have up for everyone in Louisville and our dream, exactly what you said, is to have this be a one-stop-shop. If you want to volunteer in Louisville, you're going to come to the TLC website. Now, the one, the one thing we got, you know, they're saying about duplication of services is the larger organizations have the money to have their own platform. So they're already copulating that and so they're like, "Why do I want to do two of those?" But we can work, we're going to try to work through that and see how it can go, but that is our goal, actually.
Are there comments? Are there concerns?
I like it.
Okay. I think we're good on that and then Claire has a second part of her presentation on Old Town and we're going to move right there. Because after we're going to, after that, we're going to see how the weather is outside.
Well, we do have the bus that will be here at 11:00 promptly, so.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Council had asked after we did our Old Town assessment for us to bring back a plan of implementation and so I wanted to just reach, touch on the highlights of what those implementation plan is. And if you guys are still okay and give us full authority to move forward, we will move forward with all of these things. If you don't like one of these, you just tell me, we don't like one of these and, you know, we can, we can work around that. Because all of these, if you remember, it was a menu of from least extreme to most extreme, okay? So the first one, we had, all things in black are what you as council had seen before and said, "We're okay with all of these things in black as long as we can see what your plan is, your plan of attack is." And so these are going to be our plans of attack. So in the red. So the first one...
So the first one is to do continued public improvement in Old Town. So with, with, before we do anything out in the, in the community with regard to changing zoning or anything, it is staff's belief that we need to put our money where our mouth is. So it is, the first thing we need to do is really start on our public improvements and show that we want to invest in our Old Town. We are already doing this, but I think with our main and Mill Street, which is a spring 2018 start date on, on that project, we also just received a notice that we got a $3 million grant from COG to do a complete street on College Street from Mill Street, Mill Street to the station as well. So that's exciting. And then obviously anytime there's private development and they're having to do some part of our public sphere, like talking about sidewalks, it's making sure what they're building matches our plan for, for larger sidewalks, for more walkability, that type of thing, street trees. Second one was outreach and education to property owners in the TOD area. So really for that, we really, we think we need to do a community visioning exercise with this, these community members. And that would be with real estate brokers, current property owners and developers interested in developing in Old Town. It's not just bringing the current property owners and users to the table, it's bringing the owners who will see that the value of the property has increased significantly over the last few years, the opportunity, because they'll see developers in the room as well as brokers in the room, of what could become of my property and the property value I have. The other thing is incentivize Old Town relocations elsewhere in our city. So this is going to be done similarly to what we do now, which is on a case-by-case basis, but it's going to be tied to the new investment they make elsewhere in the city. Every time we do economic development is, what is your investment that you make in our city? It's not just, we're going to give you money to get the heck out of town. It's, okay, we, like you as a use, we just want you somewhere else in our Old Town. Create areas in the city where we are target, where we have targeted uses, like auto-related uses can relocate by right. So one of the reasons auto-related uses, once they are on the ground, they're all non-conforming currently. They don't want to move because they know they can continue to do what they're doing right now on their lot and they may not have the right later on, maybe not get an SUP from council. So the idea here is to focus on an LI2 district. This LI2 district would allow auto-related uses by right, but we would bump up the development standards. So you'd have to have a certain, a heightened facade improvement. You'd have to have heightened landscaping, so it doesn't have, it still is a betterment to the community. And these are the areas that we are conceptually thinking about. We're not going to change the zoning on this land until someone wants to, to move to the area, but this is where we think it might be appropriate in the future to look at LI2 zoning.
You saw that yesterday during Brandon's presentation.
Yes, I'm sorry. Right. So this, we, the same idea for Brandon with regard to Business 121 and having auto-related uses elsewhere, these would be, this really is a, this really is a benefit around for our entire city. If there are areas we don't want auto-related uses, but we don't want to say, we don't want you as a business, we want to be more business-friendly, this is a positive thing to, to provide to them. The next is require all non-residential buildings in Old Town to get a certificate of occupancy within the next year. So I think we talked about how we were lacking in our historical data and in our, in our records on what those COs in Old Town are. So our director of neighborhood inspection services went through the same thing and prospered with their Old Town area and basically sent out a letter, looks like this, that says, hey, you have a year to come in, you may have a CO, just bring it in, we'll just document it. And we're going to provide this free of charge for you to come in. If we can't prove that something's an illegal use and we, we're just going to say there's nonconformity. I mean, there's too, there's so much gray area, as we talked about before, that we're just going to, we just have to, we have to have a starting place. Right now, we don't even have a starting place. So within a year, they'd have to come in. We also are going to be working on a citywide certificate of occupancy change to better our data that we're keeping and we will bring that back to council. That's a bigger project and a bigger endeavor, but we will be doing that. The next one is to rezone Old Town to match our land use plan. So this would allow nonconforming uses, they can still stay, but what it does is provide greater flexibility. This we would do through the visioning exercise, and we talked yesterday with the lakes about this, about how in the Bishop Arts District, it was getting a group of stakeholders together and getting them to be part of the solution. There are definitely going to be property owners that don't want any rezoning. But I will tell you that all of those property owners are already nonconforming. Nothing about rezoning is going to change how we legally see them as a use, because they're already nonconforming. So all this does, when we look at the rezoning, as you can see, this is LI. What it does is it prevents, you know, a smelting plant or, maybe that's heavy industrial, you know, a worse use in light industrial, to go right next door to some of our mixed-use developments that we already have in the works. And it would eventually look like this. Old TMU2 is one of our most flexible zoning districts and we talked yesterday, the developers talked about having that flexibility to allow for productive reuse of older buildings. And so really, we're talking about doing a visioning plan. We would get the input from the community, kind of like how we did with the small area plan. We would then go back to the community, once we have that plan written about where we want to go with the, with the district. And then the last is the most, you know, I say it's the most extreme, but it's really not, and I'll tell you why. We're amortizing commercial outdoor storage greater than 10%, and we're going to say 10 years must come into full compliance. If you remember, when we last talked, we said, if you were, if your main use was storage, then we would say three years you had to come into compliance. And some of the council members were like, what are the best practices? That seems a little breakneck. What we did is we decided we're going to just treat them all the same. Any outdoor storage greater than 10% would have 10 years to comply. So the reason why this is not that extreme is because these properties, outdoor storage, they're all, they've all become nonconforming from about 1994 is when we started doing the 10%. When you have, when you amortize the use, you have to allow them to continue to operate, to recoup the amount of money that they, that they invested in the building before they became nonconforming. So we're talking, we've allowed them 20 some odd years to operate, to recoup that, plus we would give them an additional 10 years on the books. And on top of that, we would build into this ordinance for amortization that they have an appeal right. So they can appeal to city council, it may be city council, I haven't really thought that far on it, but there would be an appeal process internal to the city that says, if you can prove that you have not recouped your investment since the day you became nonconforming, we can extend it beyond that to, you know, a few more years. And that's done regularly in other cities. Dallas has done that on Ross Avenue and things like that. So these are going to, these were color-coded originally for the, I think it was, storage as a main use. The other reason why storage as a main use, we wanted to move away from, some of them had businesses on it and it was the, I didn't want to deal with the argument of someone saying, I'm, that's not really my main use. I run a maid service out of this little tiny shack and outdoor storage is in the main use. What is that main use? So we're treating anything that's on this page in color, yellow or blue, it would be 10 years to come into compliance. And this is going to be our implementation. So public improvements begin, we then would go through adoption of our light industrial district. We'd have our community vision meeting. So this is just putting it on the book. This isn't rezoning, it's just creating that tool, if someone wants to move. Code changes for our CO process and send out our CO compliance letters, compile inputting from the community vision. We have follow-up community visioning meetings. We would then adopt an amortization ordinance and we would do proactive rezoning at the very end.
So Claire, as I understand it, the process, what you're talking about is a process and every one of those circles there has a prop, has steps that would occur and things that would be coming back to council. So I believe the question, the direction that we're seeking today for Claire is, should she continue pursuing the approach that she shared with you this morning? What kind of questions or what kind of refinements or concerns do y'all have as far as pursuing that approach? Not, obviously not the details of each of those items, because those will have to come back to you as you realize.
Claire, why did we decide that 34 years was the timeframe they needed to recoup?
Typically ordinances that we found, the common amortization period is 10 years for any use. Now typically in those ordinances, they will have made them nonconforming on the date of that ordinance and then say, you're amortized within 10 years. But we wanted to, I think what council's direction was, was we wanted to keep consistent with the timeframe of what other cities are doing. And 10 years is, is the consistency.
Claire, isn't that issue that we didn't do it initially with the change? That's what's leading to the 34 years.
I'm sorry.
I think what Claire was saying is the change that made them become nonconforming happened 20 years ago.
Right.
Right. But I think you, so it's not an additional 30 years.
Yeah, no, I, but I remember the three years being kind of aggressive and I'm kind of splitting the baby at five, but if 10's the 10, then, you know, at the, at the beginning, you will have had 34 years to recoup your investment. So, okay.
I think, I mean, five is not the norm, although these, like I said, the norm is usually when you make them nonconforming on the date of the ordinance and have that amortization.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to do five years, I mean, we can work with our legal department, find a more aggressive, try to find a more aggressive, where our legal department's comfortable with and we can bring it back to you. We'd have to bring back an ordinance regardless.
Yeah.
Okay. So TJ, you're wondering, going ahead with the approach, but looking at a shorter timeline?
Yeah.
Okay. What about other folks? Other folks?
I'm, I'm okay with the 10 years, so.
Mayor?
I'm just, I have a big concern on taking of property rights. And quite often, these kind of plans get implemented and two councils later try to fix it, because it does have a problem. Go to Carrollton a few years ago, 20 years ago maybe, but there is a turnover of the council quite often, particularly if you're taking established businesses that have been there for a long time and just zoning them out.
So the concern is to make sure that we're paying attention to the private property rights that people have.
Sure. And right now with, with the changes in Washington DC and more and more things are shifting over to property rights with Trump and all the different things he's, and Congress has gone along with it.
One of the things that I think ties in with the rezoning that she was suggesting and what you heard yesterday from, in terms of a clip, is that the change in zoning for Old Town that Claire is suggesting is actually a change that expands the possibilities of uses, so that for a number of those properties, it actually enhances their property values.
Yeah, I think what we've done in the past at the city, at least from the council level, is try to not use the stick, try to use the carrot.
Right, yeah. So that carrot kind of expands that, the opportunities for, and particularly, as you heard yesterday, as the market is going in that direction, makes it easier for those uses that you want. But certainly that concern about how that impacts property. Brandon?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm probably more on the aggressive end, but I, if 10 years is the norm, probably want to stick with that. I think within, I think what we're going to find is a natural progression as we change, as it comes, Old Town makes use too. And they are already nonconforming, they'll, they'll sell, they're already intending about to sell the prices, the prices that are going through the roof already, but maybe they'll find, they'll find a way, okay, let me go ahead and sell this property, get a profit and, you know, move my business elsewhere. Also, the strategies that you have is helping some of the nonconforming users to move to the other places in Louisville. So it's not so much, so much a stick, or at least maybe it's just a nerve stick starting off. But 10 years...
So it starts with the nerve stick, work on the sides that have the carrot kind of components.
But we need, we need to get the ball rolling.
Okay. Brett?
Tim, good.
Yeah?
I'm good with Tim. I would, two concerns. One is I feel like then I've got the backing that there's an established, sort of an established concept that 10 years has more than adequately allowed the property owner time to recoup their investment. And the other is I would never want to trigger a city of Denton, you know, Austin reaction to drilling ordinance, if you follow my explanation.
Stay more in line with the 10 years.
Yeah.